This is the April 6, 2021 Meeting of Woodstock Elementary School and the CCR Board of Education. Please rise before the leaders. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and to visible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Dr. Beers.
Dr. Gillmore. Mr. Hedley. Mr. Homu. Mr. Maselli.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Here.
The state of Illinois has altered provisions of the open meetings act on law and board to conduct business via electronic means and enforce limits on gathering sites in accordance with CDC guidelines in regard to COVID-19 outbreak. Check the website for in-person limits. Masks and social distancing are now required at open meetings. A live streaming meeting is available on the district's website. Our first quarter visits today is our consent agenda. Please review the consent agenda. You've had a chance to look at it, so please review it. Let me know if any members wish to pull any of the items from this consent agenda. There's also a personal agenda. Whenever you're ready, there is a suggestion motion on page one of your materials.
Move to it, the reading of and approved the consent agenda is printed in the board agenda, including the April 6, 2021 routine personnel matters agenda.
And motion by Mr. Parisi, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hedley. Roll call please.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Hedley.
Yes.
Mr. Maselli. Dr. Fieris.
Yes.
Mr. Homu.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
The point is to express the point as you do not debate an issue. There's a signed sheet for the public to identify their names, a parent's phone number, name of the organization, or representative any, and a description of the topic to be addressed. The public can submit public comments electronically to the Board of Education through the following email address. Written comments are allowed, will be read aloud at the meeting. Now that the parents' numbers for three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 2:230. Also, the content of the, uh, of the comments is also relayed by Board Policy 2:230, and we will accept public comments through the public comment section of the communication. Let's start with those people who are here who have signed up. Jennifer Eason? I'm very swan of it.
No, you did. You did really go. Okay, first, um, I come to you because I have a fifth grader at Greenwood's and I have a seventh grader at Northwest who I have chosen to remain remote for the entirety of the, the school year. So I wanted to come and address a couple of things as it relates to the returning to learn plan and the students who are remaining remote. I have two things that I want to address. First, I want to address the teacher change. Um, I understand in the remote learning, the return to learn plan that the teachers were going to change, the homework teacher was going to change, which is good and which is fine. I don't, I don't know the new teacher personally. I, I have a daughter who graduated from Woodstock North. She never had him, so I have no opinion because I don't, I don't know him. Um, however, what I was surprised about was that even the specials teachers changed. So my fifth grader, um, has a completely new set of teachers that was not in the return to learn plan. It did say being assigned a remote only teacher who in most cases will not be their third homework teacher. However, I didn't feel enough information was shared and it just kind of came out of, I don't know those teachers either, but it was a surprise. Um, the other thing as far as in regards to the teacher change on the return to learn plan, it says that they will be assigned a remote only teacher, which led me to believe that they would get an equitable amount of instructional time or an equitable time to what the in-person students were getting, since they were being assigned only a remote teacher that focused only on those students. And come to find out, I was told that because there are too many kids to have one group of remote students at each primary level, they've been divided into an AM PM group, which leads me into my next concern that I want to share regarding the hours. Um, it says in the return to learn plan that for the elementary, they will receive the same amount of instructional time that they are current, that they were currently getting in the hybrid model, and I found that not, that that's not true. That's not happening. Um, in the hybrid model, specifically this speaks to the specials, which is somewhat of an enjoyable, you know, can be a very enjoyable time for the kids, less academic, a little, um, more fun as it relates to the, um, remote learning. In the hybrid model, they were getting five hours a week. They had two specials a day. Now they have two hours a week. And in fact, my daughter has two days a week, but she doesn't see a special teacher at all, which I realize might be a little more in line to what they see in the elementary. But the need to statement that they will receive the same amount of instructional time when in fact they don't is a little bit deceiving. My other concern is that the state says that the district has to provide at least two and a half hours of remote instruction for the students who have stayed remote. And this is where I get a little, um, a little fired up a little bit, um, because right now my daughter is in the PM group. She sees a teacher for two hours and forty minutes. When the state's requirement at the very least is two hours and thirty minutes, I, I don't feel that doing the least is something that I just mean as my experience with my students in the Woodstock school district. And again, I have one who graduated, so I've been in the district for a number of years. I feel that a little more could be done. Um, the other concern that I have a couple more, um, that come up is my students, my daughter's day is from eleven to one forty. And my question about that arises, how does the in-person kids who are going into the building, their, their day ends either at two o'clock or two ten? So why does my daughter, will they end at one forty? And if it is because that teacher has the plan for the remote student, all of the middle school and high school teachers are also right now planning for remote and in-person simultaneously. Are they getting twenty minutes less of a school day like the remote teachers are getting? Um, in addition, the AM group, this sounds petty, turn me off. The AM group of remote learning is currently getting two hours and forty-five minutes. The PM group is getting two hours and forty minutes. Sounds petty, five minutes. However, that's twenty-five minutes a week over seven weeks. That's a total of two hours and fifty-five minutes. That's a complete remote learning day that my child is losing. Why? She was given a remote only teacher. She should be getting the same things that everybody else is getting, and she's currently not.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Mo will be addressing the board a little later in the meeting. If you care to listen, the rest of your questions will be answered. But thank you for coming and bringing those things to our attention. Do you have any other report, are there any members of the public who are present that wish to address the board of this question? Okay, uh, do you have any online?
I'm reading this public comment on behalf of Beth Rich. Hi there. I would like to submit a concern for the board, to the board meeting around the new e-learning model in which in-person classes are being streamed for e-learners. I have checked in during my son's classes the last few days and teachers are taking very different approaches. In one case, the teacher is wearing a headset so students online can hear her and interact regardless of where she is, she is in class. She also presents slides virtually and not just in class. However, another teacher is walking around the class, interacting with kids in person and online students cannot hear. That teacher is also choosing to turn the camera on his laptop to stream what he is presenting on the overhead in class versus presenting directly online to virtual students while also projecting in class. Several of the students were stating in chat that they couldn't see or hear and little effort was made by the teacher to address this. These differences in my child's learning experience from class to class is concerning. He is very dedicated to doing well in school and I would like to ensure that he and his peers have a fair opportunity to succeed, regardless of the choice to remain virtual for the balance of the school year. Is there a way to standardize expectations with the teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, once again, any other members of the public wish to, here they take them in. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? It's called.
Um, just a quick comment. Uh, my name's Jason Lowen. I live locally in Woodstock. Uh, about a month ago in the Woodstock Independent, I think they're, uh, put out something that the Woodstock School District, District 200 was going to receive roughly, and I don't have the figures, but like six million dollars. Uh, I know at the time, Dr. Lowen said that it wasn't, there wasn't a plan yet of how that was going to be spent. I'm not sure when that is going to be addressed by the board, if that's going to be addressed at all, but just as a citizen, I'd like to know how almost six million dollars is going to be spent in the, in the, or in the school district.
Well, the first amount we got was two million. We, we did a detailed plan, uh, all meeting a lot, which we gave about half our presentation on it, so.
You might miss that.
Yeah, absolutely. But the, the next amount, uh, we, we only got a final number in the last week, so we're still formalizing that plan.
Will that be addressed at, I know the last meeting of the year.
Just like the last one. Yeah, we, we come to the board, we give a full presentation, then hopefully do it with it. Absolutely. Yeah.
That is, you're more fun though, right?
It's for, it's to close, going to get through the remote learning. Yeah, just similar to last one. For the last one, we talked about, you know, we've got, um, we've got, um, the expansion of our extended day in the elementary school. We've got wide learning opportunities and reading and math at the middle school, high school level. Uh, we've got increased staff. I, I, we'll give, I can send your email.
Or will that be on the, on the website that we'd be able to see where that is?
Yeah, I, well, yeah, every meeting we, we have is also screened so you can watch it. You have the date on there more.
I'll, I just identified, I just might have missed it.
Just be clear. It's not, it's not just, we're not just being giving six million dollars. We're giving, giving six million dollars for a specific reason.
No, I understand. I just wanted to see how that was.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, but we'll, we'll, when we come back to the revised number, we'll come back to the revised plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move into staff comments. There are any staff comments. Board comments. Good luck in the ninth election for those who work for our government, and, uh, please remember to do your significant economic interests, including myself included. Any other board comments? All right, then we'll move into superheadings.
All right, we're back from spring break this week. It's packed live with the majority of our students. I'll give them the day of the meeting. And officially, that's just after break, but that's just spring on our calendar. Spring sports has started and we're really excited for the last part of our school year. Starts like at the end of the year event, when we have information on the parents in the coming weeks and full build office, students in middle school, high schools, and end of the year activities. We need to continue following federal, state, and local healthcare guidelines and all of that, and those are ever changing, but we do have plans and backups in, in every event so that we can, can hire, you know, our students at, at those pivotal moments of the career, you know, eighth grade and, uh, senior high school, wherever it's done we can. We'll bring back more detailed plans as, as we get them, but we are, you know, taking every, every action possible to make sure we give some of experiences while staying within the healthcare line. Then also the board will have a tick oversight committee by state regulation, the tick committee once a year for updates. It'll be Friday, April sixteenth. Uh, I'm invited and the board member wanted to attend up to two good. Just let me know when I can have a time to invite, call me. Would like anybody? That's our report.
Okay. All right, uh, we have another unfinished business and we'll move into our new business, which is the update on the fourth quarter return to learn plan.
Sure, so, uh, we're really excited to have schools open again in a larger fashion. Georgia going through numbers today, about seventy-two and a half percent back, uh, as of Monday, their returns in, in a very good level. Our elementary's a closer to eighty, our high school's about, you know, sixty, sixty-seven, eighty, middle school, and then whatever to get us where we're at. The procedures built are, are working effectively. I mean, obviously it's, it's a constant. Um, you, you can't let down at all. Every procedure we practice has to be followed to a T constantly. We have to continue to teach kids to, you know, the social business and, and all of that's available. But, you know, I ran the building for lunches or six feet apart in the classroom for three feet. Um, we're having, we're having successful days. You know, the drop-offs, we're, we're a lot more car-reared than we're a bus than we're used to, but things are running smoothly. The buses are getting used to their scandals, but I think there's a lot of, um, the logistical things that are happening. And I think, you know, if we're teaching, uh, having, you know, instead of four students in a class, every twelve or fifteen or seventeen or four. Um, but, you know, although every step number I've seen the last couple of days is really tired, it's the end of the day, it's sort of the kids, because it's, it's that new norm. Uh, it's going positive. There's, there's a lot of great things going on. Uh, so we're, we're really happy about that. We have to go remember kids that are back. You know, I think some of the concerns that we've heard, it obviously toughest decision in this whole thing for us was that elementary remote plan. We were very open about that from the beginning and looked at it, you know, a thousand different ways, and that's the plan. We show up with the best, to fill everyone's needs. You know, the, the amount of instructional time that remote students receive now is the exact same they had before, and that was always our stated goal. And, and we've, we've achieved that generally, could be five minutes here, it's what the living staff, but, I mean, the, the, the general goal we have for instructional purposes are the same. So specials, I'll let their little off, we'll take care of that. We can definitely look at that. I think originally we talked about having a D-Sync, um, special, remain part of that too, because we're, we're the more instructional time than maybe some D-Sync, so the code is all. So we'll look at different options to, to try to increase that as well. But I think that's, that's the area where we have to continue, you know, the elementary brought up here, not for sure, there's a lot of candy growing there. You know, I think in, in the elementary, you know, that, that would be emotional part, obviously changing, changing the position of teachers, kids and teachers, but, but I think, you know, we really feel like the, that the remote only teachers and, and they're focusing all their energies on that, it's going to be a bonus for us. Uh, maybe last seven weeks, and I think hopefully that same experience for our students, uh, they're going to see that, you know, having that focus only beyond, on them and, and the remote instruction. But hopefully we kind of did, and that, that was, again, probably tough decision at the very beginning. We shared that, we're, I don't worry about that, uh, for our expectations. You know, six, twelve now we're streaming in, which is, is different, and, you know, obviously the, well, how you got the parent and email, that could be a very specific situation, you're really going to handle it, please, that we, what classes you're talking about. But I think, you know, realistically, on the second day of doing something, we're still the role, that, that now we've moved towards, you know, six, twelve, live instruction and then the straight in. Now for those students, it's exponentially more instructional time than we had in, in remote, which is about a bit. But, but it's going to be, you know, five minutes. I think we thought of, you know, being able to, we need to do it in a classroom and then also a little bit of streaming in. So I think that, that's, it's still a challenge, absolutely, but it's one of our teachers to tackle head on. You know, I think it'll, it'll be, it'll look different today than it will in two weeks, probably four weeks, and probably get to the six and seven. But, um, again, the amount of instructional time in six, twelve is, we've gained is exponential. I think that, that can't be wrong. That, that's the current point that, that we're very excited for all students. So I think when we weigh all these things, again, it's not perfect playing the means, um, you know, and there are issues with remote, they're often tackled, and we continue to work on, uh, for sure. And just continue to be vigilant constantly with our students and our staff, uh, on our procedures, make sure that there's any, you know, as safe as possible, healthy as possible, um, you know, and, you know. Masks are non-negotiable about, you know, our kids have been great, and it goes without saying, you know, students, but I wish for a student, our kids, our kids overall do a great job. They really are. And in some of the areas where, you know.
Recess or.
Hallways, those areas you get, you can't light up at all, right? Because, because it's contrary to human nature to, to say we feed apart and we keep that space, but that's what we're constantly preaching. I think it's, it's education. How is it going to educate them and move them in that direction? But as far as the actual instructional model, we still really, you know, I'd say the classroom, um, I feel like remote only students at elementary are providing an experience for students that can be beneficial. And then, you know, six, twelve, no matter whether it's remote or live, we've increased the amount of instructional time, uh, exponentially, we could go get about two, so. You know, and again, anytime you have a model where you're seventy-two percent, twenty-eight percent, we, you know, I don't think that's going to be difficult, but, you know, we continue to work on that. We still get about where we are today, but, you know, there's still room to improve and, and we will continue to improve on that as we continue to work forward. State new guidelines late last week for the fall, we'll, we'll start looking at that and bringing some stuff back as we get later in it to May, hopefully, just to, to look at what that looks like. You know, where are they with what, what we have and, and, you know, could, this could speak highly, more highly of the job our teacher has done. You know, day in, day out, the way that they take on all our challenges, they continue to change, and, you know, I, I run on Monday, you know, that's the first day for the fourth time this year, right? Because it's a different model and it's a different change. I know it's a tough people, but my staff is just, they, they respond like change every time. You know, just that great effort and bringing new energies and new ideas, really, you know, I actually walk around on Monday at our school, for me, it was probably our first day at school, again. But it was April and the third time they thought it, so they agree with I, and, you know, I think we feel about where we're going. I'm absolutely concerned right tonight, part of the gentleman, and, and we continue to work on those and, you know, turn it forward a little as well. Any questions or comments the board has we have for these?
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Mo? Keely, everything you have, man?
I think you did a great job. It has been exciting just to see the kids and my own children. I go to Dean and Creek's side. They're excited to be back fullback.
Well, I can tell you from personal experience, high school kids aren't quite as excited, but, but it's, uh, it's, I think it's, it's a positive experience for our kids, and I think, you know, it's a good step in that direction for my, our kids, and our remote kids, it shows their role. You know, we're, we're trying to give them that, that same quality experience too, and I think, you know, increasing that time level, I think six, twelve is important, because if not, I think you're looking at a figure, you know, a figure easier coming back in the fall eventually. I think these seven weeks are going to be a pretty condition for us to act at.
Not kind of my normal school schedule, you know, five, eight, one, off, off score. Anybody else with any comments or questions?
I'm looking at the return to learn plan that we had when we passed it, trying to figure out how this relates to what the D-DU's, uh, stated when she was up here. Um, one of the questions was, did, did the elementary plan overview with respect to remote students, did say they were continuing to have a special class, which they are having.
They do, yeah.
But it didn't say anything in there that there was going to be a reduction in the amount of time, which is I believe what her complaint is, is that as far as that goes.
Yeah, you said, like I said, we're, that, we're working on that too. I, I think when we, when we had that plan, we were finding a more D-Sync rate of time being part of that, and we don't have that now yet, but we will definitely work towards that. Legitimate consideration.
And you're, you believe that the amount of time that they're receiving right now, the same amount of time they're receiving on the hybrid at all?
In our plan, it is. Honestly, there's, could be a situation where our teachers stop five minutes or five minutes late, um, but the amount of, and, and the way we have to find out, it, it gets the exact same amount of instructional time. Now that's the, um, the, the specials becoming the play there a little bit, but as far, when we say instructional, we're talking more math, you know, literacy, for dual measure too. I mean, that, maybe we should be clear on that. That time, the same, you know, our plan, again, uh, that's doing very good five minutes here or there, so something to work out, but the way to find out the exact same from Monday at proper.
Okay, why would there be a variance between, I believe it's, it looks like the elementary schedule for in-person students at Greenwood is seven thirty to ten for a half-day pre-k, eleven thirty to two for in-person students. What we just recited to us was that it, for eleven, it's eleven o'clock to, to one forty. For a half-day, I believe it's kid, would be a half-day kindergarten for, two, 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 two. Sir?
Can I bring this to you?
Sure.
This is the mail, or the time, the, the mail.
This is your fifth grader.
Yes.
And so the PM group is from eleven to one forty.
That's the same on instructional time in the core plus they had prior to.
Well, why is there a variance of twenty minutes per day for, uh, it's not, it's not, it's eleven thirty to two as well as eleven to one forty.
Right.
So it is not a variance.
It's very, I mean, it, there is, you have, you have a couple minutes here and there, but I'm just wondering, kind of, I'm looking at it saying eleven thirty to two versus eleven, eleven to two versus eleven to one forty, that's different.
Eleven thirty to two and eleven, eleven to one forty are all the same.
Yeah, it's, it's scheduled exactly the same, it's the exact same amount of time they had prior to this.
The elementary schedule for in-person students, though, say the Greenwood students are from seven thirty to two.
They absolutely are. So we, you know, and that means too, we, we talked pretty clearly, our elementary life, kids went back to a traditional schedule. Uh, so, and we were honest about that at the meeting, and that the difference, remote is going to stay the same amount of instructional time.
Why? Why can't, why can't the remote go until two o'clock just like the in-person students? What would be the reason for that?
Because the schedule is different. I mean, there's things we do when we're live that we don't do on a remote, but actually the amount of math and, and literacy time, I don't know, it, it, I think it's slight difference, it, it's very similar. It's the time in between, it's launch, all the different things that we don't have for remote students. I don't know if it's, it's like different, it's, it's very similar, it's the time in between, it's law and justice, different things that we don't have for remote students. It's, it's the same schedule we have for remote students, when, when we're live and passing curriculums, there's lots of breaks, there's all of those, it's like a thin, built-in, that the core instructional time is very close in between the two, there's other aspects of the school day that we have live that we don't have remote.
I would maybe just recommend in the future, maybe explaining that. Because when I see the in-person, so they go to, and I get that email, because my kid's not at 1:40, I'm left wondering why, because that's not explained.
I mean, and when we were here, we did explain, just that, that the traditional setting when you go back to school, there's, there's things we can't account for during all time. But we could, we could be clear in that, Dr. Mo, we'll work on that for sure. Good feedback, I appreciate it. I think, we'll work on the specials, because I, that's what I was going to, uh, mentioned, I think we should try to work on that. Although, if we're all clear, it, you can only, you can't be blood out of turn, right? It's going to be asynchronous, I mean, we, we've got people scheduled now, there's people we can, but it's going to be asynchronous instruction, but it's instruction. So, and those are fun times for activities, different things to do around, make sure they have a time to.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns regarding the role regarding the plan? Okay, well, we'll deal with this, we're going to progress as we go, we'll see what happens next time. All right, uh, in that case, there's no action to be taken on that, so we'll move into our committee reports. Have any committees met or do they have anything to report since our last meeting? Okay, if not, uh, within 10 minutes, I'll, I'll, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Hello. Voice by Mr. Home, do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Hedley. Roll call please.
Mr. Homu.
Yes.
Mr. Hedley.
Yes.
Dr. Ferris.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maselli.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.